Everyone and welcome to our fourth in the series of St. Mary's County Public Schools Town Hall meetings for this school year. My name is Jeff Marr and it is my honor to be with you this evening and to welcome you. Before we begin, I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, thank you for being here and for being part of this important event. These public forums are being held throughout the school year to share what is happening in our schools and to get input from our stakeholders. This evening, you will hear from a group of panelists and presenters with the focus on leading and learning to narrow the gap, moving St. Mary's County Public Schools forward. In addition, we welcome your questions for the panel and we have blue cards on the table where you can write your questions and pass them to any of our staff who will bring them forward to be asked. If we do not have enough time to answer all of the questions from the audience, please write your email address on the question card when you fill it out and we'll be sure to provide you a written response after the forum. We have several people here who will help lead the discussion and I'd like to introduce them to you. Superintendent Dr. Scott Smith. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Maureen Montgomery. And Director of Special Education, Mr. Scott Serbiak. Following an opening presentation, we have some panelists who will share their work from practitioners' perspectives. Ms. Cindy Kilcoyne, Coordinating Supervisor, Birth to Five Programs. Ms. Sherri Odell, Supervisor of Special Education. Ms. Krista Hayes, Teacher at Great Mills High School. Ms. Arnika Esklin, Citizens Advisory Council for Special Education President. I also want to thank the staff in the Office of Strategic Planning and Communications as well as students from the Video Production Program here at the Forest Center who are recording this evening's event which will be broadcast on our YouTube channel. That can be accessed from our school system website, smcps.org, and will be posted by Friday of this week. I'd now like to welcome Dr. Smith to the podium to bring remarks and to open our forum.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to see you all here tonight and for all of you who may be viewing at home or will be watching this afterwards, once it's posted to YouTube, welcome. This evening follows a series of Town Halls that we've been holding since the beginning of the school year, each with a particular topic of interest to the larger community and providing insight into the important work that we do with our children and giving you an opportunity to actually hear from the practitioners, those at central office, those in roles of support across the system, and those very specifically who are working directly every single day with our children. I think you're going to hear some really insightful comments from the people that we've gathered today because they are very passionate about the work they do with our children. So my comments tonight are brief. I welcome you all to an opportunity to interact and experience and to discuss the great things that we're doing with children. And at this point, I get to introduce the Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Maureen Montgomery. Dr. Montgomery, round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I have the pleasure of overseeing the Division of Instruction and the Division of Instruction is made up of six departments and so I'm going to introduce each one of the Directors of the Division of Instruction, ending with the Special Education Director who we'll bring up here next. So, all of us work together to support our schools. The Division of Instruction is all about the work in the schools. So we'll start with Ms. Cheryl Long, who is the Director of Student Services. Kelly Hall, the Director of Supplemental School Programs. Lisa Bachner, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Alex Jaffers, the Assessment and Accountability Officer. Charlotte Woodley, who works with our families, Family Engagement Supervisor. And finally, Scott Serbiak, who is the Director of Special Education. And Mr. Serbiak, when we were talking about doing a Town Hall and this one was focused on instruction, we started to talk about what would that look like and how could we get a message out to parents about what will be the best way to support kids or what they can do at home and talking about processes and what we do at schools. And we decided that it was going to be great to have a focus on special education, our students that have the greatest challenges in so many areas because each one of the other departments supports the Department of Special Education and supports those students in many different ways. So whether it be curriculum instruction and looking at assessments or whether it be supplemental school programs or supporting with Student Services or assessments, anything, we all work with our most challenging students. So, the evening tonight is all about special education and what the Office of Special Education does, knowing that all of the other departments wrap around special education and support those learners. So, I will now bring Mr. Serbiak up. He has a fantastic and supportive department. Many of the folks that are in his department are here tonight, which we are very appreciative of, and Mr. Serbiak.
Thank you, Dr. Montgomery. I'd also like to thank Dr. Smith for giving the department the opportunity to present to families in the community tonight. I'd also like to thank Dr. Marr for assisting with the presentation this evening. Before we begin, I do want to personally thank as well as the Department of Special Education for being here. They are a very supportive group. They do an excellent job and without them, I would not be functioning in the department. So I appreciate it and I would like to give them a round of applause. The department would also like to personally thank every teacher, parent educator, service provider, itinerary staff, and supporting staff that work hard and dedicate their time to our students. Special education is a very rewarding position, but it comes with many responsibilities. So again, I'd like to, myself as well as the department, we appreciate everything that you do for our students. If we can give them a round of applause as well. So tonight, the presentation will be very broad and when I call the panelists up, we'll get more direct onto the Continuum Services of Special Education. For tonight, we're going to provide the community with an overview of special education and the programs that we support our students in academic and social needs. We would like to expand our community understanding of special education process and we'd like to engage the community in a conversation about the differentiated supports provided through special education. This is a snapshot on a typical day for a special education teacher. Our department advocates for special education teachers on a daily basis and this is a small snapshot on what that looks like for a special education teacher. You often hear the word, what a case management, the caseload that a teacher has. They don't just case manage and provide specially designed instruction, but they also have a responsibility as well. And we're going to, when we get to our panelists, we'll have a teacher from Great Mills High School that'll actually kind of walk through a day as a special education teacher in the classroom setting. So our special education department looks like this. So an elementary case manager, special education teacher, has roughly about 15 students to case manage. As you've seen on the previous slide, case management, again, is a small piece to that, but they are providing specially designed instruction for those 15 students. For the middle school, we have a case management size of average about 18 and our high school has a case management size of about 15. If you look below, this is a continuum service, our programs. Our programs start at age birth up until age 21. So you can see that we have multiple continuum of services through special ed and when we call our panelists, they're going to kind of give you a more detailed description on what each one of those programs do and how they help our students succeed. We have five supervisors in our special education department. The supervisors not only support our families, schools, and students, but they also are overseeing our itinerary and supporting staff. So as you can see, there are multiple positions that are not just teachers, parent educators. We have many service providers and many supporting staff that make up the Department of Special Education. Every single role of these individuals have a major impact on our successes in special So again, as I said, we have a continuum of services. We start at birth to five, then when we get to school age, we provide specially designed instruction and then we get into that secondary transition and again, goes to age 21. We will have Ms. Sherri Odell, who is our supervisor for secondary transition, will also be discussing more in depth on what secondary transition looks like. The next slide is very important to the Department of Special Education. We often hear, and Dr. Montgomery often says, it takes a village. And it truly does. We've prided ourselves on really building a strong relationship with our communities. We want to hear from our families. We are building a very strong relationship with our Casey supporting group. We want to build that relationship with our community and we want to hear from you and we want you to be part of that special education process. With that being said, I'm very excited on where we're going in St. Mary's County. As Dr. Montgomery said, our departments work very closely together. We make decisions not only for special education students, but really looking at every student individually, what their needs are, and we make those best decisions based on what the individual student needs are. So I commend the departments on not only working with our department, but also our department working with them and truly making the best decisions for all students. So then we look at our budget. We hear the community, we hear, you're probably reading articles in the newspaper, nationwide articles about student behaviors, and we hear our teachers. So this year, we were really focused on providing additional parent educators for our regional programs and our most significant needs. These parent educators allow us to be consistent with our special education students that have the most significant needs, but as well as get them involved in the general education setting. These 15 additional parents assisted and supported these students as they went into the general education setting. We also brought in a high road program which supported our social emotional students and their social emotional needs. This was provided from the 2019-2020 budget and this was to support our behaviors and really have a therapeutic approach and giving our students with those social and emotional needs, the best support that we can provide. We also add an additional supervisor that oversees our behaviors and gets involved with schools that are showing significant behavior needs in the school system and our supervisor does reach out to those schools and works with our behavior specialists to provide those schools with appropriate strategies and focusing on those individual needs so they can be successful in the classroom. And we also add in an IEP chairperson to support the special education department as one of our elementary schools is very heavily populated. So where are we going moving forward? So for the 2020-21 budget, we're seeking five additional staff teachers, five additional parent educators. Kerwin grant funds, we're seeking two additional teachers and two additional parent educators. This will provide the supports that are needed to assist teachers with their case management and the teachers' responsibilities within the classrooms. It will also allow us to focus on our students K to 2. We're hearing a lot from the community and a lot from our teachers that our students in K to 2 need behavior strategies and some are struggling socially and emotionally. So we want to support them and we are looking at developing programs that will support those students' needs and again, the focus would be K to 2. I went through a lot of information, however, if you go to our special education website, you can find our staffing plan and everything that our department stands for, what it does, and how it provides services to all students. With that being said, I would like to start to introduce our panelists for today and I would like to start with Ms. Cindy Kilcoyne, Coordinating Supervisor for Birth to Five Ms. Sherri Odell, Supervisor of Special Education and in charge of our secondary transition. Ms. Krista Hayes, Teacher at Great Mills High School. And Ms. Arnika Esklin, our Chair for the Citizens Advisory Council for Special Education. Thank you for being here. And Ms. Kilcoyne and panelists, I'm going to ask some questions. And Ms. Kilcoyne, I'm going to start with you, Birth to Five. Can you talk about how we work with children, families, and community resources to our youngest children with developmental needs even before they are enrolled to us as kindergartners?
Sure. Again, my name is Cindy Kilcoyne and I work with Birth to Five Programs as well as related services for the school system. And when we think about Birth to Five Programs, we really are talking about two distinct parts of the program, infants and toddlers and preschool special education. Infants and toddlers serves families and children ages zero to three and these families are served via an Individualized Family Service Plan, or IFSP. Infants and toddlers is a tri-agency program, so we partner with our friends at the Department of Social Services and the Health Department to provide services to children and their families. In Maryland, families who are enrolled in the infants and toddlers program may also choose to access infants and toddlers for an additional year using the option of extended IFSP and that allows them to stay in infants and toddlers until their child is four years of age and as long as the child remains eligible for services. The goal of the program is to provide families with support in working through daily routines and to provide services in a natural environment. So families work to address the concerns they have regarding early skill development by working with infants and toddler staff to develop activities around the identified daily routines for that family. Infants and toddlers services are provided in the natural environment, so they can happen anywhere in our community. That could include at home, in a daycare center, at a preschool, or even at the library. Anywhere in the community where you find a family, you might find an infants and toddlers provider. When children get to become a little bit older, they enter preschool special education and that's for our children who are three to five. When the child is found eligible for services, the services may be provided in a variety of locations. Preschool special education, again, is for children ages three to five and when they find eligible, they may enter at a school and we partner with our general ed friends to provide services in a variety of settings from speech and language services in their homeschool, all the way to classes in our preschool regional sites. We have two preschool regional sites in the county. So we have a variety of settings, a full continuum of services for our children who are in preschool.
Thank you, Ms. Kilcoyne. Next question is for Ms. Sherri Odell in secondary transition. Most of our students graduate at the age of 18. However, we have some students who we work with beyond the age of 18 to help them transition to the world of work. Please share a little bit about those programs.
Well, I'd first like to start with secondary transition. So of course, that's a continuum of early childhood to secondary transition and that process starts when the child is 14. And it's a very comprehensive process of a case manager working with a student to do career exploration, do assessments, to kind of fine tune what they may be interested in, looking at some goals to support their IEP to drive that transition plan. So as students move into high school, transition teams or the IEP chair, the case manager, again, work with this child to guide them through each year of high school and always the goal is what is that post-secondary outcome? How can we prepare you, as our role, to prepare you to leave high school for the world of work, whether that be to go to college, have a job, go to on-job training? It's a variety sort of different avenues for students to leave high school. So once a student is 18, IEP teams and case managers will already have planned that this student will be in school past the age of 18. So this isn't something that just happens. This is well-planned. This has taken years of pre-planning to make sure that this child has all the supports they need. The IEP guides that transition plan for the student. So when students are leaving school or between 18 and 21, we have different avenues and they are individualized for our children. So when at high school works with our children, our students, to identify what those needs may be, we do have a program here at the Tech Center and it's called the Individual Programs -- I'm sorry, the Individual Program Services and we call it IPS for short. So that is a wonderful classroom here at the Tech Center that provides students with those soft skills and work readiness skills to prepare them for life after high school. And then some students go to or attend our Gateway to Independence Program which is located at CSM and this again, is a wonderful program that gives on-the-job training. So our students in the Gateway Program learn travel training. They plan their travel training to different, it could be a community agency, it could be work and they are out in the community working with, you know, community businesses that we work with. So altogether, you know, like I said, our main goal is to really prepare our children to leave and to be successful and productive citizens and leave meaningful lives and so that's our main goal in secondary transition.
Thank you. Ms. Krista Hayes, could you tell us about a typical day working in the classroom? How does a special education teacher work throughout the day to provide support for their students? What are the roles and responsibilities of a special education teacher?
Our roles and responsibilities are multifaceted. As case managers, our purpose is to support the entire child academically, socially, emotionally. We want to ensure that the child can be as successful as possible. So we do this in many ways throughout the course of the day. We support our general education teachers through co-teaching, through co-planning. We take the opportunity to create differentiated instruction within the classroom to meet the needs of each student. We provide modifications. We offer supplemental aids to help the student access the curriculum within their ability and their skill sets. We also administer interventions for the students. We do this both inside the classroom or the general education setting. We do this within small group, sometimes individually with the student. We work to create individualized educational plans for the student through assessing students informally and formally. We create these IEPs. We work collaboratively with a team of IEP members which involves parents, other general education teachers, any support staff that is, you know, is called in to play to help the student and we then take that IEP and make sure that all of the students' needs are addressed within the classroom to ensure that they're academically successful. Most importantly, we work throughout the day to ensure that each student is given their required materials, their appropriate resources, and they're provided the instruction that they need to be a successful student.
Thank you. Ms. Arnika Esklin, Casey is a parent support group. Describe some of the ways Casey gets involved to support students and families.
So Casey is a liaison committee between the Department of Special Education, each school in St. Mary's County, and all the families of children with IEPs and 504s. We meet on the second Monday of the month at the Board of Education to learn about new developments in special education within SMCPS and to work on Casey projects. And some of those projects are things like the Rise Up Awards, which honors educators who have gone above and beyond for their students. There are toolbox kits, which are devices and instructional adaptive techniques for specific needs. Those can be checked out by families. There's also teacher toolkits, which are samples of available resources that teachers can use to see if they would be beneficial in their classroom. We also hold a peer-to-peer parent support meeting prior to our formal meeting and in general, we work to help families understand the special education process because once they understand it, they're better advocates for their children. We welcome anyone who is interested in special education to join our committee meetings and you can find more information about our committee at smckacy.org.
Thank you. So that concludes our direct questions per program. I do have some general questions that I open to the panel. Feel free to answer at any time. There are conversations about student behaviors that impact the classroom. Describe some options providing specific strategies to address those behaviors. Are there differences in response based on student-specific needs? And I open that up to the panel.
For our youngest learners, we are very embedded in providing training and support and coaching for our teachers and their parent educators in the use of conscious discipline and that allows teachers to learn how to better connect with their students and through that connection, children learn to problem solve and to be part of their school family.
And for students in elementary, middle, and high school that require more intensive social, emotional, behavioral support, we have our learning adjustment programs and we provide them with a social, emotional curriculum. It is called School Connect and that curriculum enables the teachers in the lab program and our clinical social workers to provide those students with those social, emotional supports and strategies such as managing their emotions, achieving measurable and positive goals, feeling how to show empathy for others, and establishing and maintaining positive relationships. So that curriculum really ties in our programs so that our students do have those social, emotional supports.
In the high school level, we have a program or we handle this through multiple tiered systems of support, also known as MTSS. This is a multi-tiered or three-tiered level of support that we offer to all of our students and the idea is that within this, about 85% of the student body is in this Tier One, right? They're receiving the supports they need, they're moving forward, they're behaving appropriately. You move into the Tier Two, which is a little bit less, 10%, maybe 15 at most, need these Tier Two interventions, which is more small group. And then we go into our Tier One, which is a smaller group, 3% to 5%, which maybe these students need a little bit more support, a little bit more one-on-one academic support, emotional behavioral support that allow them to integrate back into the classroom, the general ed setting, and be productive students.
Thank you. And if I could add, and those are programs that we do school-wide in all of our schools and we work very close with the Department of Student Services and we provide those tiered supports to all our students and, you know, and again, we make sure that it's not just special education that is participating in these tiered supports, but we want to meet the needs of all students. So we talked a little bit about a teacher's role in the classroom, students who struggle with discipline and may need some additional supports in academics. So to the panel, how do we support our teachers to provide these services?
With our youngest learners, again, we have a master coach for our Birth to Five Team. She was trained at MSD for more than a year and all of the different trainings that they wanted us to provide to our Birth to Five Team, the Child Outcome Summary, the Routines-Based Interview, all the things that our teams use to reach families and children, she was trained to be the on-the-ground coach. So any teacher who has a question, a concern, they can call her, she's in their classroom, she's coaching with them every day that they're in school that they need her and also they meet with me. The infants and toddlers team meets weekly with me and the three-to-five teachers, the preschool special ed teachers, meet once a month with me.
And I think at all levels, we meet with our multidisciplinary teams. So each school, we work with our school psychologist. That's a wonderful resource if we have maybe some students that we need to spend some extra time on and they are facing some trauma. We work with our PPWs. We work with social workers in the school, each school. We meet with the team and we work with the administration to really kind of hone in on what the supports you need are for the student. We also have a behavioral support team that we, after we have kind of looked at all of the aspects of the student and we've been able to maybe perhaps give them some strategies or give them a resource and if that isn't enough for the student, then we have a behavioral team that'll come out and they'll assist. enough for the student, then we have a behavioral team that'll come out and they'll assist the school with, with, kind of to observe the student and assist the school with those strategies.
Within the classroom, our, we, we teachers receive this support through different interventions that we are trained on and able to provide for our students. Some of these resources you may or may not be familiar with. If you're not and you want further information, please reach out to our Department of Special Education. But we have interventions such as edgenuity and My Path and blended learning that will help students kind of bridge that gap between what's being taught in the classroom and maybe what they're missing and help them to be successful and to progress forward. We also have small group reading interventions and math interventions that again, are designed to support the student, to fill in these gaps, to help them recognize, or to help the teacher recognize what they're, what they need to minimize frustration from the student in their learning and to help the whole classroom be successful.
Thank you. The department also shifted a little bit of how we meet with our IEP chairpersons as well as our department chairs. We really wanted to hear from our teachers this year. So we actually bring in our department chairs of special education, who are teachers in the classroom, and we meet with them monthly because we do want to hear their concerns. We want to do what we can to support them within the school system. So we have seen the rigor of MCAP and the low percentage of our special education students who have met the standards of these assessments. How is SMCPS responding to this low performance?
Well, again, that goes back to those research-based interventions, RTI, and really looking at our student data, looking at our students' needs, what supports we need to put into place. Again, those interventions are very important to that. And then meeting as a team to collaborate of what else can we do to help the student succeed.
And from the classroom perspective, the interventions that Sherry mentioned happen at a very, at an early age. The earlier we can catch them, the better off we are, the better off the student's going to be. So again, working collaboratively, having an awareness, being trained in what we need to look for and what we need to know and how we can help the student.
And thank you for bringing that up. And we do the universal screening for K to 2 and then it is very accurate. We want to identify our students at an early age so that we can put them in the appropriate research-based interventions. Our universal screening, again, we start at kindergarten through two and it really helps us identify our struggling readers and not only put them in the appropriate intervention, but when you walk into a classroom, you may see what we call universal design for learning approach where you walk in and we don't, we don't identify our special education population. All of our students are engaged in groups and they're, they're teaching to meet the needs and the learners and how they learn best. So as we, as we identify and really hit on our K to 2 through this approach, we're really hoping that when they hit to grade, get to grade three, they have those reading skills to move forward and be successful. So I want to thank the panel. Those are the questions that I have for the panel and I open questions to the public at this time.[1623.11][1623.11](pause) Thank you. And I encourage our supervisors also to, feel free to answer this. We provide hot topics for our teachers this year. And the question from the public and the community is, what are hot topic meetings? What is their purpose and, of, okay, after, what is the purpose of the hot topics meetings?
So the hot topic meetings are basically to support. So if we reach out to special education teachers of what are you struggling with? What would you like more professional development on? What questions do you have? And then we combine those and we identify what those hot topics are so that we can, when we all come together, we can bring them those resources, answer those questions, and then have that follow-up, which is really important. So that's the purpose of the hot topics.
And I, and I want to thank Ms. Nicole Ayers and Ms. Carrie Smith. They often are at those hot topic meetings and they are very good meetings. And again, we want to reach out to our teachers. We want to hear from them. We hear from them at the department chairs and we do want to support them as much as possible so that not only are our students successful, but our teachers are getting the appropriate, the appropriate trainings to best support our students within the classroom. There are no other public questions. So at this time, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank our panelists and I would like to give you one more round of applause for coming out.[1735.69][1735.69](applause) And in, and in closing, I do want to say, in, in our department, our department really does seek the community's input. They want families engaged. They want family support. We want to hear from you families and you are part of the IEP process and we want to hear from you. Again, I can't say enough how much I appreciate the Department of Special Education and the work that they do for our students, for myself. And we're really working hard. And any questions that you have after you may have watched this YouTube, on YouTube, or you have looked at our website, please at any time, feel free to reach out. We are here to support you and the community as well as the teachers. We're here to support you and anyone else that may have any questions about our department. So I appreciate you being here and thank you.[1787.22][1787.22](applause)